Ms. Anderson. Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins? Mr. Kamischer?
Here.
Mrs. Conkle?
Here.
Dr. Wugley? Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Kamischer, and approval of the agenda is presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vision statement, it is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address a board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you would like to, please come up to the podium, you get three minutes to speak and just let us know your name and your capacity within the district. And because it is a non-agenda item, we will not be able to address it, but we certainly will be listening to what you have to say. So anybody here who would like to say anything? Not, we'll go on to board members. Mr. Ayers?
I don't think, thank you.
Um, Ms. Conkle?
Um, I just wanted to say welcome to Jill and Tony. It's nice to have you guys at the board meeting and I can't wait to get to know both of you better. And also, I went to the Fourth of July parade for the first time. And I was able to see the marching band and the platinum dancers and the Pleasant Valley cheerleaders. They all marched together and did a fantastic job representing our school district, so congratulations to them, that was a great event.
Brockman?
I have nothing this evening.
Ms. Kamischer, nothing for me? Um, Ms. Kennedy?
No, just that I'm really happy to be here.
Okay. Mr. Hyatt?
Great to be here also.
Okay. Um, Ms. Williams Smith?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Zimmer?
Good tonight.
Nothing tonight, you said?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Ms. Damon?
Uh, I put an updated personnel agenda in the folder as well as updated documentation for Mr. Anderson's presentation.
Okay, great, wonderful. Uh, Mr. Struce, anything?
I just want to say, uh, welcome to Tony and Jill to the table here this evening, as, as Dr. Conkle had said also. Just very excited to have both of them in the positions that they're in now, starting effective July first. Um, it's nice having Jill, watching her kind of get her feet and get accustomed to the Pleasant Valley District. Obviously, Tony knows the district already, but Jill has been meeting with all of our principals. Uh, we've gone through a number of things in terms of special education and just working through a lot of things in transition. So, I'm pretty sure her head has been swimming the last two weeks and will continue to swim for quite some time. But, real pleasure to have her on board and again, saying welcome to Tony in this position.
Great. Again, I also, on behalf of the board, want to thank both of you guys for devoting your time for the district as well as coming to our meetings and welcome to your first meeting.
Thanks.
All right. Um, moving on then, um, we will go through the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agendas presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers and seconded by Ms. Brockman to approve the evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eight hundred and three thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Brockman, seconded by Mr. Ayers, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, seconded by Mr. Kamischer, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary, junior high activity, yeah, elementary, junior high activity fund.
I move the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five thousand two dollars and seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, seconded by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High school activity fund?
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kamischer, seconded by Ms. Brockman, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management fund?
Management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fifty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, seconded by Mr. Ayers, that the management fund, managed fund warrants issued be made in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? I just had two questions and, um, one of them was for the deductible for our insurance, which was a misery incident that happened. And then the other was, um, if you saw, also, um, uh, an expenditure for, for tank insurance. So, we actually have insurance, um, that we need to provide, um, for the tank that, that houses all the gasoline and our, um, for our buses, and so that's what that was for. So, that was, those were my questions. Is there any other questions? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital project funds?
I move the capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand five hundred dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, seconded by Mr. Kamischer, that the capital project fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pepper fund?
Will the Pepper fund warrants be issued in the total amount of a hundred and four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents in payment of invoices presented?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, seconded by Ms. Brockman, that the Pepper fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal service fund?
I move that internal service fund warrant sixty-three eighty-nine to sixty-three ninety-eight, issued in the total amount of one million four thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kamischer, seconded by Ms. Brockman, that the internal service fund warrant sixty-three eighty-nine to sixty-three ninety-eight be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then trust fund?
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of eighty-four dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, seconded by Ms. Brockman, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on to old business, as you guys remember from last week's, or I mean, our last meeting, we were talking about the twenty-twenty-three legislative priorities. Um, and so, Mr. Struce?
Thank you.
Anything on that?
You bet. Um, and also during our last board meeting, we had talked about having our three legislators here tonight. Um, I received a text and a call last week from, uh, Mr. Moore that he was called to Des Moines today for a three o'clock meeting. Um, so therefore, we contacted Ms. Canoyer and Mr. Mumpson and they agreed to come to our next board meeting. So, before we make our final determination on our legislative priorities, they will be here to give us their input at the next meeting. So, really tonight, just kind of going through and getting some more information from you. In the newsletter that we put out, you had saw what our priorities were last time, which was funding mental health and early childhood. Those are the three we had put in last year. Um, and we're also at the IASB and state level. Then I also placed in the packet or the newsletter here, the IASB twenty-twenty-two priorities, which for them, the ones that they chose, which is the process that we go through, all school districts will send in August their priorities to IASB. IASB then selects them. The ones they selected last year were dropout at risk, which we were very happy about, and we'll talk about that again. Mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding, and then supplemental state aid. Those are the five that IASB took last year. Um, after last week, just kind of, I had drafted three ideas for you with pre-K school funding, early childhood, educational opportunities. And there's three that we could potentially submit there, but that's just a starting point. Um, Nikhil had reached out and asked about, you know, kind of where we were, kind of, uh, you asked last time also about where we were as staff and retention. So, maybe we would write one around educational staff shortages and quality instruction. Um, the one I crafted in that area, this is how it reads, because you would not have saw in the newsletter since our conversation. But what I wrote was, "The Pleasant Valley Community School District supports maximum flexibility to hire staff to provide high-quality instruction, including strategies to attract and retain staff, loan forgiveness, a special education generalist, and then hire retirees without IPRs impact, and elimination of barriers to licensure." So, those are all ways that we could potentially look and address staff shortages, but try to still look at having the quality instruction that we are looking at. So, we'd have that one, potentially a, you know, pre-K through twelve school funding, early childhood, educational opportunities, um, were the ones that I had last time. So, really, just kind of want to get some feedback as to where you guys are landing. If you thought about other areas, you may want to have a statement. And then when we talk to the three legislators next week, we get to kind of see where they see their vision being, um, and how it aligns with the thinking that we have at this time. And then make our final decision at our next board meeting as to what we would submit to IASB. So, really just open to any of thoughts that you have or the ones that have been crafted, those three other possibilities.
Anybody have any thoughts on, you know, additions or ones that are already?
I just didn't know with, um, still coming off of so close to COVID and the different, um, issues we see rising, if we wanted to take mental health off right now? Or if we take it off, it'd be picked up maybe by IASB and that would be enough to kind of cover it? I guess while we, um, complement ISABs versus, um, I guess put extra emphasis on it if we include it in ours, how that works?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that's a good one to ask Ms. Canoyer. And the reason why I said, she's been a real advocate at the state level for mental health, um, where she might be able to give us some feedback as to where she believes that is going. Um, because the state has done quite a bit with mental health already, but there's still a shortage in terms of professionals. So, could be a great thing to still continue to push. And I know from our district, when it looks at school-based therapists, um, we have one that's not coming back to the high school. We're still trying to find someone for that position. We did a posting with, um, Vera French. Oh, thank you. With Bethany, a joint partnership to see if, if we posted together, can we find someone? So, there is still a shortage of school-based therapists.
Are we just limited to the three? Do we have to submit three or we can?
We can submit more. It's whatever we believe and we just basically submit them on their website and then that's what moves forward. So, it could be more than two or three.
When I asked about the retention, Tony saw it too. I mean, I guess my read was, the trend was, the retention rate was going way up. And so, I don't feel like that's a concern unless I'm missing something in the data.
So, no, the data that we had shared with you, um, kind of going through, when you look at our teacher retention, um, in the last three years, we are somewhere in the high eighties to ninety percent retention. So, whenever we hire new teachers, we tend to keep them on. But this is updated every single year. So, when you go back to eleven and twelve, when we have sixty-two percent of our teachers, we had forty-three hired that year, twenty-seven still with us. The number of things that we see would be, why people leave would be, um, maternity and they decide to stay home. Or it might be a spouse moving away to a different area, or they leave us to go back to where they maybe came from originally. Those are some of the things we see. Um, and occasionally we'll have some that might leave our district to a neighboring district. Um, but those are all the things. So, you see the percentage decreasing over the years because more people just tend to leave, whether it's out of the profession or somewhere else. But that's, we have a very high retainage rate overall. Over the last ten years, we are at seventy-point-eight percent of our retention, so.
Pretty good percentage. When, when staff leave, do we do an exit interview with them to find out exactly what's going on and where they're going and why?
We do two things. Um, number one, everyone that is retiring or leaving, I meet with them one-on-one for about a fifteen-minute conversation, ask a number of questions. And then Chris Smith also sends out a survey to them. To get their feedback, just in case they didn't want to tell me in person.
Yeah.
How are our numbers compared to the statewide numbers when it comes to teacher retention and persons' teacher getting?
Could not answer for you tonight, I don't know the answer.
I know like for Des Moines, I know for, um, some of the bigger cities in Iowa, that, that they're losing more than they are gaining. It's, it's at a higher proportion than it has been in the past. And so, I guess we're lucky at Pleasant Valley that we're not in that same thing. But at the same time, I don't want it to be a point where we end up having the same problems they're having and then being in a situation where we don't have it. So, I'd rather be proactive than reactive. You're reactive, then you, then, then, then you're going to be having the, um, opportunities and the instruction that we would hope to have.
So, later in our meeting tonight, our new business, Mr. Zimmer will be talking about the teacher and para-educator registered apprenticeship, which is a way to hire new staff or staff that we have into the position. So, we'll talk about that later tonight too. That's one of the things that the state has done, retained.
And would you say that our numbers or percentage rate of retention for para-educators or assistants within the classrooms, is that a much lower number?
Yes. Yes. And it's very, I mean, it's always, it's a very transient number. I mean, it's mobility all the time, it's always moving for many reasons. But we always need more para-professionals and the longer they can stay with us, we're excited for that to happen. But I think also, when you look at the job market right now, that has not helped us. Um, you'll see a lot of times they tell us it's leaving for a higher-paying job or leaving for insurance. Those are the things we're seeing now, that's not helping us from a retention standpoint.
And those positions are, uh, primarily a part-time position, correct?
They are. Most are five-point-seven-five hours per day. Um, and then, you know, we just increase the rate of pay, hoping that will help as well.
Which I think everyone is doing.
That is, yes.
I have a question regarding when, when, for the IASB twenty-twenty-two priorities were. It has school funding and then supplemental state aid. Supplemental state aid is part of school funding. It would be. So, I mean, they have it broken down into two separate, um, little points. And I'm just wondering, um, do you happen to remember what it was that, why, why they separated it out?
Yes, if I remember.
Was it because of, um, if it was the calculation of how they calculate the people that this one or?
No, I think the school funding one had to do more with the flexibility that you could use school funds for various things. And then the SSA was making sure they set it at a rate that was keeping up with, yes. And also within the thirty days. I think that's why those two are separate.
I, I, I think the entire time that I've been on the board, we've always had funding as one of the priorities. Um, mental health has been on there for, let's say, at least the last four, four or five years, something like that. Um, early childhood, we've also had, um, in the past as well, all, all which are very important, obviously. And I don't mind, you know, having four, if you need four. Uh, because this goes to the IASB and they look, they look at everybody says and then they come up with a whole, and they, they decide ultimately what are going to be the top ones they're going to present.
Had four in the past.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
In the past. So, the educational opportunities, I crafted a statement there. I don't know if it says best what we're trying to get at, but my point on that is when it reads, you know, that we support various educational opportunities outside of public school, but not at the loss of public school funding at the state or local level. Yeah, I believe choice is important for what we allow. And we see a number of kids who, whether it's homeschooling, it's online learning, those things are important. But it's just the expectations of funding, um, and then also the accountability that goes along with it. So, um, I think our three legislators support that. And we'll see, I don't know what the best, but let's get at that at least. So, does anybody have any, um, thoughts over what priorities they want to see?
I like the four that were listed, uh, to be honest. But they, each one has, um, its own teeth to, to the state level.
So, in other words, funding, mental health, early childhood, and then teacher retention and recruitment. I, I think that those are perfectly reasonable as well. Hope people feel that same way. Certainly, at least, though that is, that, that can be our, um, initial thoughts. And then if, when legislators come, we, we want to alter something, we certainly can do that because we're not going to make a final decision until our next meeting. By that time, we'll have our legislators weigh in on things.
Teacher recruitment and funding, can we pull that para-educator part into that or is that related enough that it?
Yeah, let's see what we can do on the, because I listed as educational staff shortages, so maybe we can think about para-educators as well. So, I just want to recap that for me again. We have funding, early childhood, educational opportunities, mental health, and staff shortages. Are we taking one of those? As a breakdown.
It's the, the three in our twenty-two priorities were.
Yes.
Funding, mental health, early childhood.
Plus the staffing.
And staff slash teacher.
Do you want to include educational opportunities because that would put us at five?
Correct.
Or just do the four?
Maybe we can see how the conversation goes with legislators about mental health and if we pop that off, we can.
I'll put those five in our newsletter for, or our supporting materials next time.
And then we can amend it.
And then we'll have that conversation and then we'll decide.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Um, there's no required motion for that. Um, now we're moving on to new business. Pleasant Valley Junior High and Forest Grove Elementary construction process. We're going to have, um, a couple of people from FRK, um, attend virtually, right Beth?
Yep.
Okay.
Beth, are you in a good place to get them on now? Okay, and then do you, once you have them on, do you want to put up the spreadsheet of the enrollment numbers?
Sure.
Thank you. So, while we're waiting for this to happen, um, FRK reached out to us and they are unable to be here tonight for, um, reasons out of their control. So, we're bringing them in via Zoom. Um, as a part of that, for everyone watching, and everyone's watching at home through streaming on live, um, I don't believe they're going to be able to hear the comments or the, from the architects, from the Zoom session coming through the sound system. So, tonight Beth will record the Zoom session and we publish our minutes. We'll have a link that will take them to the recording of that conversation so that they can hear what the architects have to say along with what we said, so. So, everybody streaming at home will hear our conversation here, but may not hear the architects, but we'll get that connected with them. So, before we begin with Tom and Kyle from FRK, I just, um, want to go through and do a little history enrollment update with all of you. And we will have Beth pull it up here in just a second when she's available.
Can you guys, can you guys, can you guys talk to each other real quick, just make sure you can hear each other? And you can hear us guys? Great. Um, I'm having a little issue getting, uh, you guys camera on our end, but no, we're there.
So, one of the things as we go through here, um, in supporting materials, you saw a spreadsheet that kind of talks about where we are with enrollment right now, where we are going in the future. Um, some of the first things I would want to share with you would be, um, let me find those numbers here. When you look at the spreadsheet that is up on the screen right now, there's some yellow and some various colors. Um, first of all, you will see that we are set, which our plan is tonight, we'll talk about, we talked about previously. Our junior high construction would be ready for the fall of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And if you look down below on the very last line that you can see, there's a seven, eight total where the blue number says nine-twenty. That is the number we have been shooting for, for the junior high. When we say the junior high is basically at capacity at nine-hundred. So, we are still planning on that number being in nine-twenty and twenty-four, twenty-five. So, we're in a perfect timeline there for this project to start and be ready to go for that fall. But the thing I want to talk to you about tonight is just some unique things that are transpiring at the elementary level, which we knew was going to happen. When you look at where we are today with our twenty-one, twenty-two numbers from a year ago, when you look at that twenty-seven, twenty-eight column and go down to the highlighted yellow, which is actually the K-six line, you'll see the number that's in red, three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. That was originally our target date for when we would be full at the elementary level. We'd hit capacity with Forest Grove being at a two-section building. When we hit enrollment numbers last year, when we were up quite extensively, we actually moved the Forest Grove addition to the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Well, when you go to the green numbers in that K-six total now, you will see that where we are projected today in the twenty-two, twenty-three numbers, those are, the numbers in bold are actually the numbers where we are sitting as of today or close to today. Uh, we are looking at K-six having two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine students this coming year. We know that will continue to grow. When you look at where we were last year, that is a growth of one hundred and forty-two elementary students from last year to this year. Typically, we plan on around eighty to ninety elementary students a year. So, we are clearly up fifty to sixty elementary students. And that is still cutting off the open room, which we talked about at kindergarten and at third grade was the other one where we've, we do some of those, so we're not taking those in. When you look at that, even if we were to say on the cautious side, from this year's numbers to next year's elementary kids, if we added in one hundred students, we'd be roughly at three thousand eighty-nine. If we added in another hundred, the next year, we're at three thousand one eighty-nine. And I have that in blue again because our cap is thirty-two-eleven at the elementary schools with the current numbers we have right now. So, one of the things we are going to talk about and why I'm setting the stage for this tonight is, really, when you look at those numbers, we need to be, start looking at Forest Grove being expanded to a four-section building for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now, things to think about, right now in the Forest Grove area, again, they don't have a crystal ball, inflation, housing market, I don't know what's going to happen. But there are two substantial housing divisions going up right now where they're moving and getting things ready to go. There is one that has already been started. Then you'd also put out, we'd have the one in Claire that has started, which will be about eighty homes in phase one. So, we just have a lot of potential for growth. When you talk to the city, as the city continues to expand out that direction with TBK and things in that area, you anticipate that housing's continued to go. So, we have talked to FRK, what does that? So, we have talked to FRK, what does that look like if we were to move Forest Grove up to a twenty-four, twenty-five opening? The same time the junior high, what are the pros and cons of that? Kyle and Tom will talk about that, when they are done talking about the totality of those two potential projects. Mike and I can talk about what the financial impact would be and where are we sitting today and what does that look like for the future? But I wanted to get that in front of you, cause some of the things Tom will talk about is, what are the benefits of doing this now versus waiting and and so forth?
So, I have a question. I mean, we got one forty-ish this year. You're saying next year's just gonna be a hundred, but there's a lot, it feels like there's a lot more housing going up next year than there was this year, so then what's up with the?
I'm just hoping that the market slows, that is the only thing I can say right now, I mean. Housing prices are still high, interest rates have gone up, I mean, you're gonna see from our construction costs what that looks like. Interest rates have gone up, so will it slow it down? I don't know the answer to it, I, but. Even if it's not, that's another reason why we gotta look at twenty-four, twenty-five is fast-tracking this. Yeah, I almost put us in, if you guys recall previous conversations, there are three districts that have grown. Right at the same pace we are or faster, and it's been Waki and Clear Creek and Manor. Over the last two years, we've been number two or number three growth-wise. And it is just, we are in a perfect place where we just continue to grow and we gotta, how to address that. So, I don't see it slowing down.
Uh, this last year, legislation was passed regarding open enrollment as well. And how, first there was a deadline, now there's no deadline, how do you expect that will impact things?
Or Debbie. She is getting open enrollment requests every day and it is.
How has that changed from in the past?
So, I think the hardest part would be, we're gonna get, we get multi-families, two children, three siblings. Uh, I have a third grader, I have a fifth grader, I have a kindergarten, I have a third grader. We're hitting the point now where it's like, well, we have room in this building for a kindergarten, but we don't have room in this building for a third grader. Those are the things that we are facing now with elementary enrollment. And then junior high and high school, we're on a day-by-day basis in terms of where we're at. But they still continue to come in, it's not slowing down.
And are they, then are they, are they accepting it or are they just saying, no, we're, we're, we're just where we are?
So, two things happened, number one, we have had some people call back and they decide not to accept or they rescind their open enrollment, cause they don't want a school they're going to. So, we see some of that, but not very much. And the rest, we just say, we will look at it and literally Debbie gives me three a day, two a day and says, here, what, what do we do, what are our options? And sometimes we just have to say, we don't have space at this time, especially if it's a kindergarten or a third grader. We are tight. And again, you hate to turn away open enrollment because someday they need that open enrollment. But it is hard when we are growing as fast as we are growing, until you accept it.
It's especially hard because once they are open enrolled in our district, we can't say, oh man, now these houses are built. And we have ten fifth graders in our district, so now you have to leave.
And they, and once they open roll, they're always one of our students. They did not get turned away, they don't leave.
But I don't see that, that would only contribute to the numbers increasing at an earlier pace than decreasing at an earlier.
So, yes, so long-term perspective, I mean, we have the Forest Grove, you can build out to four sections. We already, we've been talking extensively about what does Cody look like, what does Bridgeview look like, and then what are the options down the road from there, so. We have, it's, gonna start the conversation we're gonna have later, about financially, how do you make sure you're putting yourself in a position to be able to continue to add on? And you need about a two-year window, depending on what the construction is, um, and the amount of the, whatever classrooms you're putting on and other things.
Brian, can you remind me, the new housing addition of eighty homes going into Leclerc, are those Cody children or are they Bridgeview children?
They would be Cody, yep, and so would the second addition, cause the second addition, my understanding goes further to the west, towards the junior high, so those would all be Cody.
And the ninth through twelfth grade, there's a blue and a red number on the anticipated.
Great question, yes, so what transpired there, originally, we were looking at twenty-seven, twenty-eight, which is the red number. In the nine, twelve, that's, we thought we'd have to add on to the high school, cause they would be at capacity. Um, after the last year, we bumped that up to, you can see twenty-six, twenty-seven as a possibility. So, again, we could be looking at high school additions and we, so as soon as we get the junior high and Forest Grove done. You could be looking at, here comes the high school construction and here comes a Cody addition, I mean, they're all gonna be right there on top of each other, yes.
Do you expect the high school addition to just be like another tower?
So, the conversations we have had there would be, we can add three more towers in the school. And then also, when you have the three towers that can be added on, there's also a long front section as well that combines the three towers. Um, and then we've also talked about other additions on there as a possibility, like an auto area. Uh, we could add on back by the science area, there's room back there, so there's some different places, it just depends about how many classrooms we need. And what does that look like?
In the parking garage.
Since you bring up parking, um, I don't wanna say a lot, but we may have a pretty good option with. Our local community college that we are trying to work through some options with them, that might set us up for the future. Short-term, long-term, so. We understand the stress that puts on families, we're just trying to figure what's the best way to move that forward. And just remember, parking lots are not cheap, my goodness. I mean, we just did the million-dollar one at the junior high, we're over half a million on the Pleasant View addition and the bridge you put together. Parking lots, you, they're expensive.
And we gotta make sure that they are not used for recreational activities on the weekends.
The gates that have been placed out here have minimized it, the neighbors are very appreciative of that. It's really kinda calmed things down from last summer. Um, Lee then will put some reflectors on there so no one drives through them, but it has been a much better summer this year than the last summer. Never would've thought that would, two gates could do that, but.
Getting that accomplished, I went to something about that too, it looks nice and put in and it, I'm glad that's helped.
That was all Leland being able to put that together real quick for us, so.
And and for Cody, what would you do for that?
Cody's currently a three-section building, you move it to a four-section building. Addition, seven classrooms for sure, and then probably some office space, couple restrooms typically, but.
Oh my god, there's a gym and the guy, they're all equipped for four, for a section, four-section school.
Could be, yes.
Okay, I guess without, without um any other questions, are there any other questions, otherwise we'll go to um, R K.
I do, I have one, uh, with Bridgeview, is there any plans to expand that school, that's the only school that seems to not.
Yep, so that's a great question, so with Bridgeview, what we have talked about, it's. The three-section building is very difficult, there's just a lot of things when it comes to staffing and you, we've walked through that with a number of schools. We really like to put Bridgeview to a four-section, I think the conversation then tends to be the green space, how much you have left after you add on. And then do you make it a two-story building is a, is a conversation we've had, so the new addition, we potentially two sections. We're talking to Tony over, over the last, it's also again, you know, what does your gymnasium look like, where's the best place for the cafeteria? Those are all things we have to have a conversation about, but.
You need to have an elevator, right?
If you go two sections, yes, you have to have an elevator, yes. So, there is a lot of, I would say. My statement is, how do you build ourselves to Pleasant Valley six fifty? Pleasant Valley six fifty basically means you're getting to class sizes of six hundred and fifty. Right now, we're pushing over four hundred in every single one, but when you build out the high school, you got the junior high built out. All the elementary's done and potentially one more elementary, that would max us at six hundred and fifty kids per class. And that puts you at roughly ten thousand students, and that's about the time you have to be looking at building a second high school. And a lot of things happen at that point. So, I don't know when that's going to be, but um, that's kinda how we're seeing our vision of where we need to get to.
Six fifty per?
Class, per graduating class. And that's what you'd, you look at the Iowa cities of the world, Waki's, when they hit that nine, nine, ninety-five hundred, ten thousand, they're starting to split into schools. High schools.
Any questions, otherwise, Tom, why don't you, can you, can you walk us through this?
Tom, I'll project.
Beth has it up already for you, Tom, you're good to go.
And I know we're kind of deciding. Like, right back. One question that came up was thinking that contractors, that's a quality.
Will, will this be bid out then as two separate projects, one contractor, or will it be bid out as two separate projects? And if we, and then if you get two different contractors, but it comes out cheaper, then we would go with that, how is this gonna be bid out?
Uh, are you concerned about uh subcontractor labor capacity? If they're working both these sites at the same time?
So, the perks of having one contractor, if I'm understanding this correctly, is there'll be some cost savings potentially. With the paperwork and the submittals, but also the uniformity of having one contractor do both sides.
Any other questions? Okay, why don't you, you can move on.
Beth, could you go back one slide for a second? Just want to say one thing, Tom. When you go back to the right there, so when you look at that, just notice that on the north side, northwest corner, you see the blue and the orange. Those are the restrooms that are being put in there, or one set of restrooms there. The other ones on the other northeast and the southeast where the orange is, the restrooms are already there. So that's where the one set was, needs to be added on to the building addition. Thanks, Beth.
......
I think what we'll do here at this point is if the board has any questions for you, we'll let them ask at this point before we, before our session expires here, and then we'll go through the financials with them, answer any questions, then we'll do a required motion after we get done answering those questions. So the board, any questions you have for these two to be appropriate now?
Since the construction is going to be going on during the school year, it looks like, is there a concern with noise level, either the junior high or elementary school that might interfere with learning, and how do we mitigate that?
You're fine. Would you like me to send up another link?
Do you guys have additional questions that we could ask of them? If you can, Beth, we definitely can, if you can get them back, kind of, maybe.
Absolutely.
That's what you can do.
The only question I had was the $600,000 for the parking for Forest Grove. What does that include? Because that's not, doesn't look like that's indicated on the line at all.
We will have to ask them that question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the parking additional would look like. The courts over there and where that.
On the east side, for a safe exit, entering exits.
Are there any spaces in the junior high that are like not used at all that can be used for other things?
You mean classrooms and so forth?
Or other things. I mean, I can just remember like the locker, I mean, the locker rooms, for instance. How often are those being used, the shower area, all of that?
Mike, do you want to comment on those?
I asked the same question of whether we can use storage, and I think by code, we have to have showers. So the locker rooms are sufficient for a little while, but we will run, and when we get to that 950 to 1,000, we will look at potential locker room expansion as well. As far as additional classroom spaces, no, we're tapped out about everything from a classroom standpoint. We currently share several classrooms with teachers, so that's being utilized already. So we're going to be stretched thin the next two school years to make sure we adequately find spaces for all our students.
Yes?
Jeffrey, we'll parent in the district, just a couple of questions I had. The kitchen space of the junior high will be sufficient with the renovation? If you're wanting enough food, okay? And since we also talked about touching all of the schools, are there any new best practices for safety features that should be added to the schools with new construction?
Great question. So as we go through all of our construction needs that we have right now, we talk- It's, uh, it needs to be adjusted.
Thank you.
Yep. The biggest change you'll see is the family consumer science rule. That is one that, again, just needs to be updated for the space that we have in the design, because there's a wall going down the middle. As Tom had mentioned it clearly, or I think it was Kyle- As Tom had mentioned it clearly, or I think it was Kyle mentioned it, just opens it up and creates a nice flow. Sightlines for everybody, plus new, just new cupboards, new appliances, everything.
Kyle? Can you hear us? Do you happen to have the spec sheet at all? One of the questions that was brought up was when you look under Forest Grove space, there's six hundred thousand dollars for parking. But there's nothing in the drawings that, that's talking about parking in Forest Grove. Wondering if that might be a mistake and that six hundred should be under the junior high space. Uh, Tom, if you look under in the specs under the Forest Grove space, it says there are parking six hundred thousand is a unit cost. But in the drawings, there's no additional parking. Is that supposed to be meant for the junior high space?
Yes, hold on.
I'll go to the low left column, Beth. You're talking about the PowerPoint presentation. You want the PowerPoint?
This is what he, this is what he's.
You want this here, Tom, or the, the building?
Yes, this, this is perfect. At this point, I'm putting this in the forest. A three minute dissection party. Site work, it's over by about thirty thousand. Just to drive. About the only exact thing you can spend the site work required with the rest of it. Time to pull it back out with our, with our. Here, um, costing. All that, that I certainly want to be this, this is my investment. I want to know things out. What I have to do, uh, understanding of the forest project is that the natural destruction. Was bad, but.
So long term, remember the, the plan would be on the west side of Forest Grove. There could eventually be a city street that runs down there. And then where our bus and turnaround is right now, that could connect into the city street at that point. But I have not heard when that street is coming, but that'd be a change at that point. But our parking right now would be comparable and somewhere we have at Hopewell. So hopefully that is a cost that can, for the most part, will come off.
So where's the parking at the junior high?
Site work, he said.
The site work for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, that's what he said. Thanks. So as you look at the costs up there, as Tom mentioned, it is clearly higher than what we had anticipated from when things are now looking at about three hundred dollars per square foot. Um, when we first budgeted this, just as a reminder, our five year plan, um, we had budgeted the junior high six million dollars and for Forest Grove, three point six million. So that's coming in at nine point six million is what we have budgeted for this project. When you look at the total up there, the two put together, it's about sixteen million to sixteen seven. So we are sitting approximately seven million dollars higher than we had calculated. So the question is, well, what do you do now? You know, I think after one of our last meetings, two months ago, Dr. Wogly had asked about, you know, at the junior high, we could take off those four end classrooms, which equates to about one point two million dollars possible savings. But if we take those, I mean, the question is, you take them off, when, when do you need them? How fast do you need them? And are you bringing them back on? Also, and that's going to add cost bringing the contractor back in. So when you look at where we are at, Mike has been running numbers. We've talked to, um, our financial group and. Do you want to talk about where our latest, we had, remember we had borrowed a number, uh, years back, four separate borrows that we had had. And we still have some of that money left. So I'll let Mike walk you through. And where that nine point six that we already have budgeted in our budget, our five year plan, it's there for that project. And then how do we reach the remaining piece? I'll let Mike kind of walk through some of the numbers there.
As Brian said, um, as you may recall, we've done four previous borrows against future statewide penny sales tax receipts. In two thousand fifteen, we borrowed ten million dollars. Two thousand sixteen, we borrowed ten million. Two thousand seventeen, we borrowed another ten million. And then in two thousand eighteen, we borrowed another fourteen million. So we have borrowed forty four million dollars over those four years against future sales tax receipts. And also in two thousand eighteen, we did a borrow against our future PEPAL receipts. So that was a general obligation borrowing against future PEPAL receipts. And that was a borrow of seventeen million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And all of those borrows, especially that last one from PEPAL, were with the intention of finishing up the high school addition that we had a few years ago. Um, and then some of the other additions that we've done recently and taking into consideration possible future additions, such as the junior high and Forest Grove and, um, those kind, kind of things. We currently still have approximately, um, well, we've already spent all of the proceeds on the first four sales tax borrows. But from that PEPAL borrow, we still have a, after we pay the, what we have remaining to pay on the construction of Forest Grove, which is just under a million dollars, we will still have approximately seven million dollars or so left from that PEPAL borrowed money that we borrowed back in two thousand eighteen. Also, um, each month we get additional revenue, our normal monthly revenue from the statewide penny that comes in. We currently in our fund balance, we have about five million dollars in that fund also from the statewide penny. So between those two things, we can apply at least part of those towards this overage that we have projected here on, um, junior high and the Forest Grove project. Um, even with that though, because we do have other projects going on out of PEPAL and stuff like that, we still anticipate that there could be a need to borrow money, um, prior to the junior high project and the Forest Grove project being completed. What we most likely would do is borrow once again against the future sales tax receipts. When you're borrowing for school districts, there's basically three different options. You can borrow against future sales tax receipts, as I said, we've done in the past. You can borrow against future PEPAL receipts, which we did that one borrow in two thousand eighteen against PEPAL. Or your other option is you can do a general obligation bond. The difference is if you borrow against sales tax receipts, it does not have to be taken to a vote of the taxpayers in the district. Same thing with PEPAL. If you borrow against PEPAL, it does not have to be taken to a vote, um, by taxpayers in the district. Since you're just borrowing against future revenue that you would already be getting, it does not affect the district's overall property tax levy rate. So that's what the main reason it doesn't have to be taken to the voters. The difference with a general obligation bond is that does have to be taken to the voters because that gets funded through a debt service tax levy. So that would increase the property tax levy rate in the district. So that's why that has to take to a vote. Um, and it does require, currently requires sixty percent voter approval for a general obligation bond to pass. Pleasant Valley has not had a general, general obligation bond with a debt service levy since back in the late, late, uh, nineteen nineties, when we built Riverdale Heights. There was a general obligation bond and a debt service levy at that time. Um, that borrowing got paid off shortly after I started here at PV in two thousand one or two thousand two, I believe, is when that was paid off.
Yeah, it was nineteen ninety six, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. So we have not had a general obligation bond at Pleasant Valley since that time.
How much that was for?
Um, I believe it was fifteen million or so.
And they paid off in three years?
Um, it was about four or five years, actually, yeah. And we actually paid it off early to save interest. We were able to do that by escrowing some money from other funds and stuff, so. Anyway, um, as, uh, Brian said, we've been working with Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler on this. And as far as the amount of money that we could borrow, that the borrowing capacity that we have from these various, various borrowing options. If we were to borrow from sales tax, we currently, based on the numbers as they are now, have approximately thirty six point six million dollars of borrowing capacity against future sales tax revenue.
Mike, what's the year that we can borrow out to?
We, we could borrow for twenty years. So whenever we borrowed, we'd have to pay it back within twenty years on sales tax. Uh, PEPAL, we have currently borrowing capacity of about two point eight million dollars. If we were to go with a general obligation bond, and there's two different levels you can do for a general obligation bond, you can do a maximum debt service levy of two dollars and seventy cents per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. Uh, with that, we could raise about seventy six point three million dollars of borrowing. If you go to the maximum debt service levy for a general obligation bond, which is four dollars and five cents per thousand of taxable valuation, we could borrow approximately a hundred and fourteen point six million dollars. Our constitutional debt limit, just giving you all the numbers here. Our constitutional debt limit is calculated as five percent of the total assessed valuation in the district. So if you used a combination of all these methods of borrowing, constitutionally, we would have a limit of about a hundred and seventy two million dollars that we could borrow. So we have the money out there available to borrow.
Hold, hold on, can you wait until, um, well, first let them finish. We're going to go through the board, then we'll come to you.
Money available to borrow. One issue, of course, right now is the interest rates have been rising, as I'm sure you've heard about on the news, and are projected to continue to rise. Um, for example, um, a sales tax bond, about a year ago, the interest rate on sales tax bonds was around two point one zero percent. Four months ago, it was up to two and a half percent. Today, if we were to, um, borrow against sales tax today, it's around three point nine five percent. And Matt projects, if we were to wait, or if we were to borrow in a, in the time that we project, we might need to borrow in the spring or summer of two thousand twenty four, he projects interest rates on, wait a minute, I, I skipped a line here. Um, yeah, we're talking about sales tax bonds. Like I say, a year ago, the interest rates were two point one percent, four months ago, two and a half percent, today, three point nine five percent. And in the spring and summer of two thousand twenty four, he projects they could go up to as high as five point two five percent. It's similar for all the other methods of borrowing. For example, a twenty year general obligation bond, a year ago, the rate was one point eight five percent, four months ago, two point two five percent. Today, it'd be around three point eight percent. And then, um, in the spring and summer of two thousand twenty four, he projects it could go up to four point seven five percent. So that, that's the difficult part right now is we're in a, not in a good time to be borrowing with the rising interest rates. But, you know, we may not have much of a choice if we want to keep up with the earth in the district, so.
Before we finish, do we need FRK for anything else? Otherwise we can.
I mean.
Does anybody have any other questions for FRK? Cause if not, we can certainly, um, have them have the rest of the evening for themselves. Any other questions?
Thank you, Tom and Kyle.
Thanks a lot, Tom and Kyle. But I think we're, we're, we're done for right now. Okay.
So kind of summarizing a little bit, where we are at is, um, when you take with what we budgeted and what we have currently borrowed, we can, we'd be right at where these numbers are basically. Um, as Mike mentioned, you can ask Leland, we have a number of the projects, I mean, these comes out of this, killers and boilers come out of this, parking lots come out of this. So it is, this makes things very, very tight. And what does the future look like in terms of borrow against future sales tax? We can. So we have to watch that closely. But remember, you borrow against that, that's your future sales tax. So it sounds like we have money, but then you also know things are going to come up and what's going to happen and how do you project out? Whoever sits in the seat, you have to plan for the future of what that looks like and how do you afford things? Um, when you look at future additions, when we talked about earlier tonight, you take the high school could be hitting with our timeline. Cody could be hitting at that same timeframe as well. Um, that high school project in of itself is a lot of money, a lot of money. Um, when you look at what we'll need to do, that, I mean, there's parts, I mean, with the hundred and fourteen million, I think you said, Mike, that we could borrow at the four dollar rate roughly.
Right.
Um, that sounds like a lot of money. But when you take on the high school project, which would be the towers, potentially the automotive area, we've got some things in facilities with the football area that we need to look at from a locker room standpoint, all of those things. That one fourteen could be gone pretty fast. Um, so it sounds like.
I mean, I just think, aren't these schools getting really big? And isn't it time to really consider like, I know it's a lot of money, but don't we get to the point where we've got so many kids? Sometimes that creates other problems.
Yeah.
Where it's trying to say we need another building completely?
Yeah. I mean, when you look at building a new high school, for example, it's over a hundred million dollars right now. Way over that is what you're looking at for a new high school. Junior high, with the additions we're putting on there right now, when I talk about that Pleasant Valley six fifty, that's like the end. I mean, we have, what we can do here right now, what we've talked about tonight with the construction, there is one more section in the back of the school where we could put four more classrooms on, the locker room extension and possibly another gymnasium. And those are things we've talked about, but then that would tap out junior highs done at that point. Our elementary schools, we will continue to keep those at the class sizes we have. Four sections is what we like. We don't want to go larger than a four section building. That's why getting Cody and Bridget to that, that's where we want to be. That would also add in another elementary school down the road. The high school, when you look at the towers, maybe another area for classrooms, again, we'd be done because that's just too big at that point. Um, but right now, we feel like these are the ones that put us in the best position versus building a whole new school. And land prices right now, I can tell you, are not cheap. Um, and don't know where there's, those will go either. And a lot of the land that we are looking at in our area is not very flat. So when it's not flat land, you may just purchase the land, but then develop the land and double the price of that just from the site development work. So a lot of things that we are looking at in terms of where do we go, what are our options and how big will we continue to grow? Great question though.
So let's get, um, can we get any questions from the board?
So Mike, the borrowing options. Um, the interest rate differences between the. So I think my basic question is, are they significant enough to take into consideration?
The lowest interest rates are, it looks like are borrowing against future PEPAL receipts, but we also have the lowest borrowing capacity against PEPAL. Cause right now, we only have about two point eight million dollars that we can borrow against PEPAL. Um, eventually, you know, our current voted PEPAL expires in June of two thousand twenty eight. Eventually, if we approve that for another ten years, that could raise our PEPAL borrowing up to, borrowing capacity up to nineteen point six million dollars. But there's a question on how soon we would be able to do that. Baylor's law firm, the law firm in, out of Des Moines that handles the majority of school district borrowings in the state, is of the belief that you can't extend your voted PEPAL anymore than, or, or attempt to extend your voted PEPAL any more than two November elections prior to the expiration of your current voted PEPAL. So unless they've changed their understanding on that, we wouldn't be able to extend our voted PEPAL until like November of two thousand twenty five. So.
That could be the next stage, right? So if we figure out what to do now, that might be the.
Exactly. Our next phase, our next phase would be number one, sales tax. Borrowing against sales tax, future sales tax. PEPAL's the next one. And then after that, given where we are with our enrollment, it may be a general obligation bond.
And at least at right now, uh, borrowing against sales tax is a little bit higher interest rate than a general obligation bond. Like Matt projects, um, in the summer of two, or spring or summer of two thousand twenty four, sales tax rates at five point two five percent and general obligation rates at four point seven five percent. So that's about a half percent difference between the two there. One other thing that we were going to share is, as I. One other thing that we were gonna share is, as I mentioned, um, with a general obligation bond, that is funded with a debt service levy. Looking at some of the other districts in the state that are growing at similar rates or faster than Pleasant Valley, um, Ankeny is growing at a pretty fast rate. They have a two dollar and fifty-nine cent debt service levy. Iowa City growing at a pretty fast rate has a, a dollar seventy-two debt service levy. Waukees, of course, the biggest growing district in the state, they're at the, pretty much near the maximum. They're right at a four dollar debt service levy. And Clear Creek Amana, the other one Brian mentioned earlier, they have a, they're pretty close to the maximum, too. They have a three dollar and eighty-two cent debt service levy. So, all of those districts, if you compare the total levy rate, Pleasant Valley for next year, our levy rate is thirteen forty-six. Clear Creek, Clear Creek Amana is at seventeen oh five for next year. Ankeny at seventeen oh five also for next year. Iowa City at fourteen ninety-three for next year, and Waukees seventeen dollars and eighty cents for next year. So, all of those districts that are growing pretty much at least equal or more than Pleasant Valley, their property tax levy rate, because of the debt service levy, pretty much because of that for the most part, they're at least three to nearly four dollars higher levy rate than us, but they're having to do that to be able to keep up.
So, we've, as you said, since nineteen ninety-six, we've not had a GO bond, and we've tried to always do it through these other mechanisms, through PEPAL, sales tax, we'll continue to try to do that as much as possible. But it may come to a point where we just need to, we're growing too fast, and the projects are too big, and we can't have more to do it that way. And if that's the case, then we would go through, what does that look, the whole process you go through, through a general obligation bonds process you follow, people have to be involved, and then one or two questions you take to the voters, so.
Is that would require a special election?
It does. It can be on one of the national, one of the elections in November, uh, March is another timeframe. And I think if it doesn't pass on one, you have to wait six months, I think, before you can do it again. So, those are all things you have to plan out for.
But, you know, if we're looking at possibly, not for the next set of projects, and if, and if it doesn't get passed in six months, I mean, that could delay everything. So, we have to plan really far in advance.
Yep, in about, yeah, in the next two years, we'll have to make these decisions where we're headed. Because right now, we can handle, this can be taken care of through our sales tax mechanisms and what we already have borrowed the last time.
And one thing that's not included, which was kind of briefly mentioned, is the fact that, once all of these are done, then we are basically maxed out on elementary schools unless we have new land.
Correct.
So, we need to be looking at that also as a possible, possibility, possibly earlier rather than later, just to secure something so that we have a plan of what to do when we do need it, what we've done in the past.
That's correct.
And you said land is not expend, is not cheap.
Correct.
So, giving me palpitations right now. But, um, that's, that's a, that's a lot to figure out from a funding standpoint, it sounds like. We have to be very proactive about.
Correct. Google satellite is a great thing to look at sometimes, to see where the land all lives.
I think if we feel like it's imminent, we're gonna go, we're gonna need a general obligation, which it sounds like that's the case. Mike, I think the question to have is, you don't tell your boss the bad news the day before something bad happens. You know, how should we be communicating with community about this insane growth we're seeing? And communicating that, you know, look out for the schools here, cause we're gonna be asking for something.
I mean, that's in, within a four-year window, that's where we're gonna get to. I mean, we need to figure out how fast we continue to grow and the impact that that's gonna have on our elementaries and in high school. Junior high will be in a good place after these additions and what we can do there. It's the high school, and how many phases are you looking at? Cause you also be wise stewards of tax money, what I mean by that is, when you build something, you don't wanna have empty rooms either. You know, so it would be easy for us to say, hey, go put all three towers in the high school, and then they sit there, and you don't need them. I mean, I'd hate to look back twenty years from now and say, boy, we built this, three towers of the high school, we've never used two of them. Well, that's just a waste of money, so again, it's, let this go for a few more months, see what happens another year from now, and try to predict better what we need in the phasing that we have to go with.
I just keep thinking back to Hopewell, when Hopewell was just built as a two-section, and right away, immediately, you have to go to four-section. We're seeing the same thing now with Forest Grove.
Correct.
And so, uh, we're, um, you know, we have good planning, but it's always been more exciting than what we thought, than we just anticipated.
You know, Hopewell, we saw is those, the year before and a couple of years after, we had a huge growth, you build it and they will come. Um, and we're seeing the same thing with Forest Grove, you just don't know, is that gonna taper off? Or is it just that everything is moving out here, and it's not gonna slow down? That could happen, that's the world that Waukees is living in right now, it is not slowing down for them. I mean, they built their last high school a tune of a hundred and forty-ish, I think is what they were, now new elementary, thirty million. I mean, they are growing fast.
So, if we did like a, the general, the, the referendum or whatever, um, if you do that, do you have a certain amount of time that you have to spend it by?
Yes, there are limits on that, well, it gets into what's called arbitrage. Um, if you are, and we haven't had to worry about that over the past ten years or so, because the interest that we're earning on our money has been less than the amount of interest we're paying to borrow money. Um, but if you would get into a situation where you're earning at a higher interest rate than you're borrowing against, then you have to pay some of it back to the IRS and file stuff, you know.
You're making money on your borrow, you gotta pay it back.
Basically.
And they look at, you know, you have to, and if you get in that situation also, yeah, you have to spend the proceeds within like a two or three-year period. So that's why you have to be careful not to borrow more than you need also, cause there are limits on how quickly you need to, spend the proceeds from the borrow.
Cause that one seems to be the most involved, obviously, and the one that we have to get, um, approval from the taxpayers. But yet, that's the one that's gonna give you the most potential.
Right.
And so, if we at least have that secured, we know that we can move forward with these products, projects, but if we don't have that secured, we'll put these on hold.
Right.
We need to get better projections from FRK as to what they think those additions would be. High school before, we can look at, you know, what a kind of go bond, how much are you asking for, all those things. Is it below the two dollar limit, or is it between the two and the four? Cause four is the max that you can ask for, so.
Once you pass the four dollar maximum for a general obligation bond, that's there forever. You always have the authority to go up to four dollars and five cents for a general obligation bond. That never has to be voted on again, we haven't done that yet.
You're talking about the, the tax.
The service levy.
The levy.
Yeah.
And, and how long will that, and that will just, how long does that last? Is there tough on time?
What I'm saying, it's, you never have to vote on that again, you will always have the authority to levy up to four dollars and five cents for a debt service levy. You still have to take the first ballot question every time you borrow, though, which requires sixty cent approval to borrow the money. To get the authority to go up to four dollars and five cents, you just only have to have the voters approve that one time, and then that lasts forever, unless they change the law.
I see. For the max, for the max, I think it can be, you're saying.
Right.
So, again, you see roughly that sixteen point seven tonight, that's what we're looking at. Um, there, like I said, there are some things, we could take those four classrooms off, but those conversations we'll keep having. But right now, it seems we need the space moving forward, so maybe our recommendation, keep moving forward. We don't have any other options.
Does anybody else have any other questions regarding taking this to the next level? Anyone else from the audience that wants to say anything else?
Okay, if not, I will take a motion then.
I move the board approve the design development process for Pleasant Valley Junior High and Forest Grove Elementary.
Motion, Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the design development process for Pleasant Valley Junior High and Forest Grove Elementary School. Will call vote please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Breckman.
Yes.
Mr. Camerichir.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wabley.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the teacher and parent educator registered apprenticeship, Mr. Zimmer.
Okay, well, on your packet, the, uh, evaluation rubric at first, we'll cover that, and then it's the program design. I'd like to publicly thank Nikki DeFaw and Ally Vandermead with the Davenport Community School District. They, uh, were front and center on the development of this, and approval of this three million plus dollar teacher incentive program. It took a while to get approval from the state, because I believe the department event was caught off guard as to how many applicants would express interest across the state. The pool of money was much smaller at the beginning, we were supposed to get an approval, um, in May. That ended up getting pushed off a month, but in the meantime, additional, but resources were found wherever, at the state level, to support an expanded version of what I'm about to tell you right now. So, in the program design, the purpose is to try to encourage Iowans that are currently employed in the school districts as, uh, parent educators, or it could be students that are enrolled in a teacher education program. So, it can, that's, that's kind of the group that they're targeting. Well, what would that look like? Track one would basically be students that are in a teacher education program that would be at the junior or senior level, that, um, would basically participate in earning their parent educator certification um, at the same time that they're going to school, but then they're also working as a parent educator or an aide in one of our classrooms. And so, there are some school districts that have an education academy that are targeting that. Davenport has a program like that. We have students, individual students, that are in the teacher education program, but we don't have an academy set up like that. So, we have no one involved in that level of the program. What we have are track two and track three. And that would be targeted towards current adults that are employed, are parent educators in our district, that are working in classrooms, and they would, first and foremost, they would enroll in or become a registered apprentice called a classroom aide. That is a U.S. Department of Labor Registered Apprenticeship. It requires two thousand hours of commitment on their part. Well, to give you an idea of how they would accrue that, right now, as Brian talked about earlier, our aides usually are at five hours and forty-five minutes a day, or they come out to be twenty-eight and three-quarter hours per week, just underneath the thirty hours because of the benefit level. They go thirty-six weeks, they could accrue somewhere around a thousand thirty-five hours in one school year. If they were to be employed during the summer, help out with summer school, or students with extended school year services, those hours could also count. And that takes them over into the second year, and this is a two-year program, and that's how they complete the program. And that's, that's how they, so, when they're done, um, they need to have either their parent educator certificate, that's required, um, if they don't already have an AA degree or BA degree, and a, a number of our staff already have that. So, anyway, that, and they're paid at our sixteen dollar and fifty-one cent rate, that's, that's what they're paid. The school then gets six dollars per hour back from the grant to help offset any of the costs of implementing this program. So, that's, in a nutshell, how that works. How do you determine if a, if an adult is going to be in track two or track three? It all depends upon how many, uh, college hours that they have completed. If they have sixty hours of more of college already completed, they are into what's called track three. Track three means that when they're accepted into the program, their partnership post-secondary institute, which would be like Upper Iowa, these are the institutes that we've, uh, partnered with, Upper Iowa University, uh, Western Governors, William Penn, and then the Rappel, which is the region's alternate placement for, uh, licensure, which means that it's the three state schools, Iowa, Iowa State, and you and I, if they go on that route. Well, why would that matter? What does track three get you? Well, track three allows you to access seventeen thousand dollars per year of tuition reimbursement. Track two or one is seven thousand dollars pool, why is there such a difference? If you're in track one or two, you're first and foremost, you go to the community college. The tuition rate is substantially less, and so the pool of funds allocated to that is at the seven thousand. As soon as they get to that sixty-hour range, now they switch over from the seven thousand dollar pool to the seventeen thousand dollar. So, that's kind of the difference of what's going on right there. So, with that, I kind of described the programs, uh, are in your packet, like Upper Iowa, they kind of show, and they have to be in a hard-to-fill teaching position. Well, who determines hard-to-fill? The Iowa Department of Education, on their website, if you go to teacher shortage area, they have all the licensure endorsements listed, uh, there. An elementary teacher currently is not listed as a hard-to-fill position. However, an elementary teacher paired with a special education endorsement, that does need it. So, that kind of gives you an idea. So, anyway, that in summary is what's going on. Pleasant Valley is part of a large consortium, um, so Davenport holds the registered apprenticeship. But, they are the fiscal agent for all the other schools that are participating. Clinton, McCoqueta, Muscatine, Pleasant Valley, Bettendorf, North Scott, there's a whole, West Liberty, there's a number of other school districts that are participating in this. Well, how were the slots allocated? So, each of us that were participating, we were allocated teaching slots based upon our enrollment. Besides Davenport, we are the second-largest enrolled, um, school district in AEA nine. And so, we were allocated six track, one or two slots, and six track three slots, just to kind of give you a budget item. I had thirty-two, um, employees back in April expressing interest in this opening. By the time I got done with the interviews, by the time we got to the portion where some of them stayed with us, others have not, they moved on, I was down to sixteen. Out of the sixteen, then, they had to get their FAFSA filed by June thirtieth. Well, I only had six that got that done, and I was working from vacation down in the vacation home down in Tennessee, trying to get people to complete the form. So, then when I got back and I looked at this, I was like, okay, there's too much at stake, this is too big of a decision. So, I picked the phone up and we called again, and I emailed again, and I said, are you sure you don't want to participate in it? I picked up another four, so I had ten. And of the other six, again, I reached out, and it was just not gonna work. So, today was it, the day was the day. So, I started, uh, I went through, and I used our grading rubric that you have in front of you about how many years you've been with us, um, whether you're gonna participate in the apprenticeship, and I had to score people. And you had to get a score of eleven to be considered. So, I've got our ten. And I called this morning and this afternoon, and I had three people that were just elated, and so I sent them the, the program participation guidelines on this, and I had the other seven that I'll be calling tomorrow, and then we'll finish up, they'll get their official letter, they need to meet with, uh, the partnership school. If they start from ground zero, they'll be meeting with, uh, Nikki Gilliam over at Scott Community College. They'll sign up for that, and, uh, if they're further along with that, some of them may only be visiting with Scott for maybe one or two classes, and then they're off into the four-year program. The other thing I would mention, why did we choose, uh, as many post-secondary partners? First of all, we were encouraged by the, um, department vet to only choose one. Well, that just doesn't work for our families and our, so some, when we asked, do you, uh, learn best, uh, online? Do you learn best face-to-face? And so, we chose a variety of post-secondary partners, some like St. Ambrose are face-to-face only. If that's the route you wanna go, that's who you wanna be with. Um, Western Governors and William Penn are online, completely, one hundred percent online, okay, that's what you wanna go with. Upper Iowa is a combination of both, a hybrid, and, uh, so it's some in-person, usually on Saturdays, uh, maybe in the evening, and then the rest of it is online. So, that's, so, the other thing, though, is not all the post-secondary institutes offer all of those degrees either. So, sometimes you might look at and go, well, I like this as my learning modality, but you don't have my program, so now I'm gonna have to choose this, or they're gonna have to tell me, I don't wanna do this anymore. So, I, even though I've got ten, I'm not definitely positive that I'm gonna end up with ten after we get through all of this. So, this has been, uh, this has been quite, quite the grant, and the rules have been changing on us also. Um, we didn't realize until just two weeks ago, that if you didn't have an AA degree or a bachelor's degree, then you had to complete the parent educators, which is three courses. Then you had to complete the parent educators, which is three courses. Um, and the, uh, grant will pay for the courses, they're a hundred and twenty dollars a peach, a piece, but they require this ninety hours. All, uh, all combined is ninety hours. So I'm talking to folks, okay, you're working for us. You're gonna be going through the parent educator, and then you're gonna be taking your classes on top of that. So, this is not for the faint of heart, and with families and everything, it's some real conversations going about, are you sure this is gonna work for you? And all that kind of business, um, so. That is a really, really fast summary of a very complicated and rapidly changing. Process, but I think we're getting there.
Mike, can you explain the whole purpose of this and why they brought this forward, and also what is the outcome once they finish, and what is our hope for the each individual?
Well, the, uh, reason for this is that, um, this state, like in other states, is in desperate needs of teachers. I mean, I can tell you that even in this district, which usually is highly sought after. Um, it was not unusual twenty years ago that we would have four hundred applicants for an elementary position. Um, we are half that, even a third, I mean, we're not even close. It comes to family and consumer science, uh, industrial technology, special education. I'm lucky if we get fifteen or twenty applicants, in some instances, I'm lucky if we get two. Um, and, and it's in our district, and we're at a spot now where we're basically just. Going from one district to another where it's, you know, it's, uh, our number of teachers that I feel bad. Our principals having to call up for reference checks for our Davenport neighbors, and ask where they're coming from. Um, so, it's, it's a process of growing our own, I would say that's, that's what we're trying to do. And, uh, I think Pleasant Valley does as good a job as any of growing our own. The number of teachers that we have that are PV grads is pretty incredible. Um, and we keep adding more, but that comes from encouraging students to say, I think you would be great at this, and. Going that route. It actually started its genesis, it actually started as a very, very small program to try and recruit. Um, teachers of diversity, to, to get into the profession. It started at very small, and then it just grew bigger than that because the needs have become so much. More acute.
Any questions, can you, Mr. Zimmer from the board? So we have our ten.
We have three at the moment, ask me tomorrow at the end of the day, and I'll see where I'm at.
Any other questions? Okay, there is, um, no required motion on that, and then, um, our next item is May monthly financial, uh, reports. Ms. Cooper, please be a little gentle on this afterward. This financial discussion, we had just two topics at the moment.
Well, this one should go much faster and, and is not, it's not bad news. Looking at the May monthly financials, um, things continue to track where we would expect them to be. Uh, May, of course, being the next to the last month in our fiscal year, our fiscal year just ended June thirtieth. So, I did not see anything that stood out to me as unexpected. Um, on the May monthly financials. Uh, now as a reminder, again, June is the last month of our fiscal year. So we will not be presenting the June monthly financials until after our auditors are here. They are scheduled to come, I think it's September ninth and twelfth, um, shortly after Labor Day. Is when they're, um, scheduled to come and complete their audit field work. That's when they give us any adjusting entries that might need to be made to our books. Um, so the, and then our, our report to the state, our certified annual report to the state is due September fifteenth. So, most likely, we will be presenting the June monthly financials, once we know there won't be any other adjustments to our books. As we've done over the past number of years at the second board meeting in September. That's also then when we would present the July and August monthly financials, so just a reminder on that. Again, I didn't see anything unusual for May, so unless any of you saw anything that you questioned, let me know, otherwise. We just need a motion. Approval of those.
You have any questions for Ms. Cooper? Now I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for May twenty twenty two as presented.
Mark, and Ms. Brockman, so we're sure that the board. Reports for May twenty twenty-two as presented, roll call vote, please, Ms. Taman.
Mr. Ayers.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Panwisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Um, okay, that ends this meeting. Future dates, our next board meeting is Monday, August eighth at six PM, and that will be the meeting that we're gonna have our legislators at. Uh, then we have Monday, August twenty-second, um, at six PM as well. And then on Wednesday, August tenth, there is a new teacher breakfast, uh, for the board members who are interested. It is held at the Bettendorf Family Museum, uh, and, um, it starts probably at seven thirty in the morning. Uh, and it's a time where you can meet, um, new teachers that are coming into Bettendorf and into Pleasant Valley and Rivermont. And I even believe that come, here's Scott Community College.
Right, and Miss Morning, Morning Star also.
Mayor Morningstar as well. Um, I've actually gone on, I think almost every year that I've been on the board, it's always a really good event to kind of see. Um, and meet new teachers and see what other districts are doing as well, so if you get a chance and you wanna go, please RSVP to either Beth or Deb. RSVPs are due by July twenty-seven. Is there anything else for the go to the order? Not?